Okay, the meeting is called back to order at 6:43 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second that the agenda of February 11th, 2025 be approved as submitted?
So moved, second.
Board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I have a motion and a second that the board approves the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
Board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed?
With respect, your sound reinforcement is not working. We cannot hear you back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. After talking all day, sometimes my voice goes down, sorry. Can I have a motion and a second that the treasurer's report be approved?
So moved, second.
Board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? And we are on to special reports.
Wonderful. We're going to start our evening with tapping into our student voices. We have from Bay Trail this evening, the Puzzle Club. We're going to be able to enjoy a video that they've put together for us, so we'll do that in just a second. We also have our Black Student Unions here from both Bay Trail and Penfield High School, and they'll share a presentation with us. And we also have a transportation update from our Director of Transportation, Mr. Mike Gala. So we're going to start, maybe Principal Saveen, if you want to come up. I don't know if you want to introduce the Puzzle Club, or if you have anyone here with you.
Not tonight, but maybe too.
Okay, alright.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all. So our Puzzle Club is a unique group of students. They really love puzzles. You'll see that in their faces in the video. But they do meet weekly. Sue Metis, our business teacher, is the advisor, and she is thrilled to share this video that the students put together. She couldn't be here this evening, regrettably, but wanted me to introduce that and just share that this group shares not just an affinity for puzzles, but community building, working together, and they come back every week for the challenge. So enjoy Puzzle Club.
Thank you, Principal Saveen. Alright, let's hear it for Puzzle Club! That was great! Okay, now we're going to move on to Bay Trail, our Black Student Union from Bay Trail. We're going to invite them up with their club advisors, and we hope that everyone can come on and make some introductions, so that we can get started with that group.
There's a handheld microphone. The handheld, there's a handheld. I'm Phyllis Blake. Is it on?
Yep.
I'm Phyllis Blake, I'm the advisor.
Hi, I'm Shaquille Williams. I co-adviser Mrs. Blake, and I'm also a social studies teacher at Bay Trail Middle School.
Hi, I'm Kiara Wall, and I'm a 7th grader at Bay Trail.
I am Verses Dyer, and I'm a 7th grader in Bay Trail.
I'm Mackenzie Mitchell, and I'm a 7th grader at Bay Trail.
I'm Maria Foley, and I'm a 7th grader at Bay Trail.
I'm Tanya Chin, I'm a 6th grader at Bay Trail.
I'm Brandon Gray, I'm a 6th grader at Bay Trail.
I'm Zara Beatty, I am an 8th grader at Bay Trail. The Black Student Union Group was founded at Bay Trail Middle School during the 2023 and 24 school year. With Mrs. Blake as the lead advisor, we had a total of 12 members. Through the awareness and the commitment of our students, today our membership has grown to over 20 members, and Mr. Williams is our newest advisor. BSU at Bay Trail is dedicated to creating a safe place for our members to congregate and discuss important issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion here at Bay Trail. The BSU officers, myself, the President of BSU, Zara Beatty, the Vice President, Leah Mendez, the Secretary, Soraya Fernandez, the social media managers, Mackenzie Mitchell and Verses Dyer.
Beginning in the 2023-2024 school year, we launched our annual Black History Month Read Aloud program across four elementary schools in the Penfield School District. This year, the Bay Trail Middle School Black Student Union will lead the Read Aloud sessions at Cobles and Scribner Elementary Schools. We cherish this opportunity to connect with, inspire, and serve as role models for our younger peers. It's also a wonderful way to highlight and celebrate the importance of Black History Month.
At Bay Trail, the Black Student Union, BSU, celebrated Juneteenth with a PowerPoint presentation that was broadcast on BT TV for a week leading up to the holiday. We also hosted a Juneteenth celebration, enjoying foods that reflect our diverse cultures. During February, we organize and participate in a Spirit Week that highlights African-American culture, providing opportunities for all students to engage and celebrate together.
Okay, thank you, Bay Trail Middle School. So as they transition back to their seats, we invite the Penfield High School Black Student Union to come up and join us.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Paige Fletcher. I'm a social learning specialist with Center for Youth over at Indian Landing, and I'm the advisor of the Black Student Union over at the high school this year.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Marion Musafa George, Director of Student Engagement and Cultural Relations and co-advisor of BSU.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Pritchard. I'm a sophomore at Penfield High School, and I'm really glad to be here with you all today.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deasia Andrews, a senior at Penfield High School, and I am the Vice President of BSU.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Shaniqua Miller. I'm a senior in high school, and I am the President of BSU. Okay, hello, board members. We are here tonight on behalf of Black Student Union to share more about what BSU is all about. BSU started around 2021 at PHS, and over time, we've grown and expanded our community and events and the activities that we do and offer at the high school.
Our BSU members would like to share quotes about what BSU means to them. We'll be sharing them throughout our presentation. One BSU member, Kyla, a senior, would like to share, "BSU is a space that allows me to be myself."
BSU, AKA Black Student Union, is for us people of color at Penfield High School to come together in a safe place and environment to just, you know, communicate, be comfortable with each other, and after school hours, because we don't get much time to do that throughout school because of classes and stuff. We also collaborate during Black History Month to educate the school and fellow students by taking over the announcements and bulletin boards to present facts about important historical figures, as well as we do a Juneteenth show at the end of the year, and it's a performance that we come together and create for Penfield High School to see. Another BSU member, Alana, also a senior, would like to share the following quote. "BSU is like a family, a place to be ourselves, to gather, and use our voices without being judged."
Black History Month Takeover. We would like to share a bit, a little bit about what we plan for Black History Month. At PHS, all Black history, oh, at PHS, BSU programs for Black History Month are called Black History Month Takeover. Black History Month Takeover is us BSU students collaborating to create PowerPoint slides to present on the announcements. Our plan is to educate fellow students, adults, with inspirational quotes and facts about either, like, historical figures who aren't heard of enough, or also, like, historical figures who are known. And we also host fun activities such as Spirit Week, which is the week after break, and I'm so excited. One of our BSU members, Serene, a senior, would like to share that BSU is a place where I feel safe and included, where I can express myself freely. It's where I can learn about one of my cultures and teach others how to appreciate and include Black culture. And also, for example, in the first picture is a bulletin board around the school that we, like, post, and it's basically, like, Black history, or Black, sorry, Black figures who've created, like, important inventions, like, around, that we use today, or like, was very important. And also, the second picture is our Decades Day during our Spirit Week.
Okay. The Black Student Union plans many events throughout the year, with our biggest especially being the Juneteenth Show at the end of the year. And then we also have Black History Month Takeover, which is what we're doing as of right now. And for example, along with the Black History Month Takeover, we do Read Alouds. The Read Alouds allows BSU students to visit the elementary buildings and read stories to Penfield's younger students about Black history, as well as teach important messages. And like Deasia said earlier, about historical Black figures that either aren't recognized enough, talked about enough, or that you guys already know about, but just to get more information on them. The Juneteenth Celebration is another event hosted by BSU, where we come together as a club to create a performance for Penfield High School to experience while getting educated on Black history in a fun way. And the first picture here is actually pretty recent. It was last Thursday, some of our BSU members traveled to Indian Landing to read to the students. And in the second picture here at the bottom is a picture that was taken during our Juneteenth Show last year. It was just, like, during preparation. It was, like, very off-guard, but it was just to show that, like, the aesthetic and the comfortability that we have with each other. And Melody, a BSU freshman, shares another quote. "And BSU is like a family to me. And being in an environment where there are not too many people like us, it is very important to have a community."
What does BSU mean to us at PHS? If you ask any member in our club, if you ask any member in our club what BSU means to us, the answer would be unity. To us BSU members, to us BSU means we can come together as a family and collect and connect with each other on problems and universal struggles we all experience as a person of color, especially during, like, our experience here at the high school. And in the picture here, this is our most recent trip to Philadelphia. We were granted the opportunity to take an educational trip to Washington DC and Pennsylvania that allowed students to experience several, like, HBCU strips, or HBCU schools, sorry. Like, for example, we saw, like, Chaney and Lincoln.
During the trip, it also allowed us to visit different, like, historical museums, monuments, and as long as, as well as, like, going in, like, the HBCUs, we also, like, experienced, like, how they run, like, sororities and fraternities, and just, like, different events that, like, isn't, like, not normal, but like, definitely way more exciting than in, like, your high school experience. And it just also allowed, like, us members and students to venture out and experience other schools that aren't just in New York, and like, just made us more comfortable with, like, going away from home and wanting to learn in another environment that isn't in Rochester, New York. So yeah.
It also allowed us to have a bonding opportunity, like, outside of school, which we don't get a lot, but yeah, like, we really felt like a family during that trip.
Thank you so much for this opportunity for us to share about what we are all about and our club, and just, like, having you experience what we experience through just a summary of explanations and pictures. And thank you for having us.
Yes, thank you so much for listening and letting us have this opportunity. And I just wanted to remind everyone that, like, BSU is definitely, like, a place that, like, is very sacred to us and all of our members of it. And I really want to thank Mrs. Watt for allowing us to have that, like, space to grow and really, like, have, like, a lot of freedom with what we do.
Again, thank you for watching. Again, thank you for watching our presentation. Before we end, though, we would like to share what BSU means to us personally. So, uh, I want to go. So for me personally, BSU is basically another family to me. It's like a place where I could be myself, a place where I could show myself, express myself, like, and certain stuff that we've been through, certain circumstances, certain boundaries, certain obstacles that we had to overcome, all that. So that's basically BSU was just a second family to me. Family, friends, whatever, whatever you want to call them. And yeah.
Oh yeah, just like to sum it all up. BSU is definitely a sacred place for us, and it makes us all feel comfortable, and it's definitely full of laughter. And shout out to Ms. MG and Ms. Fletcher for allowing us to continue BSU and continue keeping our club and being the best advisors that there is. And like Deasia said, shout out to Ms. Watt for allowing us to have our club and continue being the best that we can be around the school, and have us host different events and take trips, like, here, to be together. So yeah, thank you for having us.
Board members, any questions or comments? Thank you guys all for coming and being brave and coming up in front of us and presenting and letting us know what you guys do in your club. Thank you.
And I'll just say, I am so glad that you joined us this evening to share with us about your club and the importance of having your club. And your voice matters, and we so appreciate being able to hear it here this evening. And I look forward to future updates about all of the wonderful things that you'll continue to do as part of the Black Student Union. So thank you. Can we have one more round of applause? So it's usually at this time. Oh, you have something?
Yes, so I, Nicole, I was trying not to get emotional. But being able to see a vision that I had just a few years ago in the 90s. As a student here and starting the BSU, and along the way, you know, it didn't continue, but to see, having the opportunity to see that it's back up and it's still serving the same purpose that it was meant to do, it just, it makes me really proud, and I'm happy that you guys have that support because unless you're, you experience the situation, sometimes you really don't understand the situation. And I think it's important to always have a community wherever you're at. And I'm glad that you guys have your community.
So at this time, we usually say that we can let our students go, so you don't have to stay for the whole meeting. And I'm sure that you're just not going to walk out of here, but you might run out of here, because it's going to be a long meeting tonight. So thank you so much for coming. We appreciate having you, and we look forward to your future visits. Alright, good night to our students. And at this point, we, you go. We will invite our Director of Transportation, Mr. Mike Gala, to come give us a Transportation Department annual update. Good evening.
I said, "Good morning."
Some of us think it's morning. Yeah, good evening.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Gala, Director of Transportation. I'm going to present a little bit of what we're dealing with this year and some of our challenges. And it's always hard to come in after something like that, because I've got doom and gloom, and they got all this excitement, so I apologize. So I'll just give you a quick update of our staffing, and we will go through, there were many things we could have talked about tonight. I chose to talk about the capacity and our shortage of drivers and what we're doing about it and how we're going about fixing things. So currently, we have five office staff members, pretty much the same as last year. 66 DMV roster drivers, those are 60 drivers that are actually driving currently for us. Ideally, we'd like to have 76. Therefore, when we have somebody calling in, or we have medical issue, whatever, we have people to fill in those runs rather than office staff, mechanics, myself. So ideally, we need more, but we have enough right now to cover what we're doing. We have 16 attendants. One of those attendants is training to become a driver. We have three mechanics out there, full-time mechanics. In addition, we have three additional part-time drivers/mechanics. So while they're not driving, they're out there helping the three mechanics keep up with the fleet. And like I said, one of the attendants is going to be a driver. They're in training for the driver position now. Currently, our fleet consists of 58 large diesel buses, two electric buses. We have 22 mini buses. We have four wheelchair buses, one of which is a full-size bus with capability of handling three wheelchairs in it, so that when we're doing trips and so on and so forth, we have the ability to take the whole team or group of people together rather than separate them in a smaller bus. In district runs that we're doing currently, that would be high school, Bay Trail, and elementary runs, we have 229. We have 61 out-of-district runs. Those are runs that are going to BOSI's or any of the charter schools or anyplace within Monroe County and sometimes outside of Monroe County. And we're serving 52 schools right now. We've contracted with outside contract transportation nine students in four runs for four different schools that are the furthest of the outliers, which you're going to see in some slides later in the presentation. And BOSI's right now is covering seven schools for us and serving 34 students. Our new bus purchases for '25, Dr. Triffel has secured a grant for us to purchase six more Bluebirds, electric buses, to go along with the two that we currently have. We have three new Bluebird mini buses coming in, and additionally, have one more wheelchair minibus coming in for '25. They should be in in June. We will be getting rid of three of our oldest mini buses, which are about 130,000, 140,000 miles on them, and they're pretty well rusted out, so they're, it's time for them to go. Driver training, this is, this is a little interesting. This took me by surprise, because you don't think about it until you put it all together after the year. This is year-to-date, January to January. We've added 13 new drivers, and in the process, we've, throughout the year, we've lost nine of them. We've lost them through termination, or medical, or unsafe driving, any number of different reasons. But we have, we have four left, and they're doing great. And like I said, we have one left in training. With the four additional drivers, we're still struggling to keep up with the continuing additions of atypical transportation. MV, special needs, tutoring, all to add time variations, all of the different things that play into transportation. We're struggling, but we're doing it. We currently, with atypical transportation, are driving 1,137 miles a day, 5,600 miles a week, okay, across 39 different runs. So we've, we've increased our mileage and our capacity significantly. And so there's, there lies the struggle, not so much the shortage of drivers, of course, but we also keep building up what we're trying to accomplish, which we have to do. I'll talk more about those numbers in just a little bit. We'll go to this next slide, which talks a little bit about New York State and what the governor has done about helping school bus drivers get licensed easier. This came up last year, and it was just extended to last till November 28th of 2026. And that is, it's eliminating the need for a school bus driver going for their license to go under the hood, to check the, you know, go into the oil, check the air, the air pump, the compressors, the power steering fluid, all of those things that we do through maintenance that's required of a Class B CDL driver. They've put this in place. This class of license only is allowed for a school bus driver, and this isn't a permanent change in my mind. So we, at Penfield, are still training to the standard CDL-B with the PNS endorsement. We still go under the hood for multiple reasons. One, in case this does not become grandfather down the road, we don't lose a bunch of drivers having to do the road tests again. It also allows us to have a driver that can help us in the event of a breakdown, identify something for a mechanic who's got to go out there with some parts and tools and something to decide, you know, what's broken. So that's why I, I want to continue to train to the full CDL-B with the PNS endorsement. It's maybe another week, week and a half of training to get to that point. It just doesn't make sense to me not to do that. DOT, Department of Transportation, inspects our buses every six months. Our current rate is 100% from 106 inspections. Every one of the buses that we have on the road is DOT inspected. We have one that's not, and it's being auctioned off as we speak. And with, knock on wood, we're doing really well. Here's our report card for last year, 100% in the good. Mechanics are doing a great job. Alright, bus durability. We've increased our miles driven by 18,852 miles this year, year-to-date again. This is January last year to now. We are at 4,000, or 400,000, 409,108 miles traveled to date. That's crossed the board for all buses, the contract, our outside-of-district, everything. We have more drivers with more students and more miles to cover. We're forced to hire back some of the contract transportation that we were able to eliminate a couple of years ago. But in order to keep up with everything, I have to pull them back in. And you saw on the slide before, we've got four runs and, I think, nine drivers that we're using outside. So unfortunately, that's where we're at with that. The next couple of slides are going to be visuals of what we've been doing, where we're traveling, and how we're meeting the demand. It's just, kind of just puts it into perspective a little bit by looking at where we are on the map and what we're actually doing. We have to do it, I understand that. I just want to make it very clear what we're really doing, because we talk all this stuff, but you never really understand it until you actually see it. So hopefully, this helps a little bit. Last 10 years, even with the glasses, that's kind of small. 2014, we were traveling 658,000, 659,000 miles a school year. miles a school year. Just before COVID, we were up to seven-hundred-and-fifty-three. Then obviously, the dip in there is COVID and the years after. When we came back in twenty-three, we went up to seven-fifty-nine and today, or 2024, we ended at seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-six. So, we're continually adding and adding to it, okay? And this'll break it down just a little bit more. I apologize, this is the first slide of another presentation. This is Penfield, all right? We all know that Penfield is in the darker green. The dimensions basically are eleven miles wide and five miles north and south. That's our town proper. The little green dots in there, which I could make them yellow, but I can't, are school buses. And those are all of our buses out on the road at this particular time. And they're all, as you can see, condensed in the, basically in the Penfield area. But then the red circles, and this doesn't represent all of them, but the red circles show you where else we are, okay? And I don't know that you can see this without looking at it on paper, but we're out as far as Wheatland, Chillicothe to the, to the west. We're up in Williamson, we're in Cannon, Daegua, and everything in between. So, we're, we're cranking up some miles and we're, we're moving kids around all over the place, okay? So, this chart was basically going to do the same thing. The blue line is us, everything else is outside of it. This is not a representation this year of all of them, there's much more. I was going to put in the yellow dots, but the thing got just too crazy, so we didn't put the student living outside of districts out there. This breaks it down really for you. Last year, we did eighteen students outside of district. This year, we're at fifty-four right now. Last year, we were doing ten schools. This year, we're at twenty-six. Last year, we were able to do it with fourteen drivers and those drivers also include some of the contract drivers that we hire. This year, we're using thirty-six drivers. It's almost a third of the, the group. Last year, we were traveling seven-hundred-and-forty-four miles a day. This year, we're traveling eleven-hundred-and-thirty-four miles a day outside of district, going to the other programs that we go to. From last year to this year current, we were at three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand last year. Right now, we're at four-hundred-and-nine. So, there's a substantial increase already this year and we're not into June yet. That was it. So, we're doing it, but when you hear me whining, that's what's happening.
Board members, questions or comments?
Yes?
The students who live out, well, the, the transportation that we're doing outside of district, do you know what is the reason for such an increase in that?
I think there's multiple reasons. Some programs that are being offered to maybe special needs that need it, we don't provide here, so it's provided someplace else, so we take them there. We also pick up some kids that may be outside of district to bring here because we have the program, things like that. We have McKinney-Vento students all over the place that are brought in. I think the state determines best program for some of these students and we just comply. And then, of course, you know, if we're in the last, the last parts of their school, senior, junior, we want to continue them and do the best we can to keep it going for them.
So, so we're not just serving kids who live in Penfield, but maybe need to go outside of Penfield for their education. We're also serving kids who don't live in Penfield?
So, when he talks about McKinney-Vento, that's our homeless students. And so, their designation would allow them to continue. So, if they started with their residence here in Penfield and then they became homeless, if they moved to somewhere else, we would have to provide that transportation. We also have our students with disabilities that may not necessarily have programming that we can accommodate in district. Therefore, they would have to access those accommodations and that specialized programming outside of our district. So, in those cases, we would be providing the transportation for those students. And so, that's what we're noticing the increase for, particularly with homelessness designation.
Is there a, a limit to how far?
So, we can legally go up to fifty miles. We have to go up to fifty miles each way.
But then, but then he also mentioned students that live outside of district who come here for programs that we have, or no?
No.
Okay, I heard that wrong.
We wouldn't have students come and participate in any program that we have in district. That would just be for our Penfield students.
Okay.
I misspoke.
Oh, no problem.
Unless it's McKinney-Vento.
Foster program. So, there are, there are those, those unique circumstances for some of our vulnerable students.
But their district wouldn't bus them?
No. We would, we would provide it.
We are their district.
We are.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense. I'm thinking about like students that go then maybe like private schools, because then we still have to bus them.
Yes. So, if it's a district, if it's a student that lives in Penfield, a family that lives in Penfield, and then they also are participating in any private or parochial programs, we would be responsible for their transportation because they are Penfield residents. So, that is another one of those unique circumstances where transportation is provided.
I have one question. What percentage, because I probably ask this every year, what percentage of our buses is aidable, like the purchased?
Yep. So, we'll talk about this a little bit later, but our current transportation aid ratio is seventy-four percent.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Do you know what the, you spoke on like this shortage and I know there's a shortage everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
What are some of the things that you've identified that's causing like the shortage? Is it, is it the, I guess, the licensure or are there other things that you've noticed that might be contributing to that shortage?
I, I think initially, we were thinking that these shortages had a lot to do with the amount of money that they can make to do it. Certainly not a full-time job, right? It's a part-time job, but even at a part-time job prior to all the districts starting to raise what they pay, it was, wasn't really much different than working at McDonald's or Walmart or Wegmans or something. And the responsibility involved and the effort that you have to put in to be a licensed driver of passengers, let alone schoolchildren, is significant. And it's, I like to think that we're a little more picky about who we bring in, you know? I'm very much more happy bringing in grandpa, grandma and grandpas and aunts and uncles and then I am younger drivers and so on and so forth to, to do it. Now, I can't control that, obviously, but, so, I think that might be a little bit of it, too.
Okay. Thank you.
I just, I have a comment, not a question. I just want to thank you for everything you do to get our kids to and from school every single day. I know it's a puzzle and you're constantly being really creative and you're also being proactive and, you know, if the licensing does change, it doesn't put us in a bind. So, I just really appreciate your thoughtfulness that you put into the position.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll also add that you talk about, you know, the challenges. You have always been extremely flexible and supportive of all of our students and our families and our district needs. So, I just want to publicly say thank you for everything that you do for our district transportation.
I appreciate it, but I have a wonderful staff of people that help me do that.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. It brings us to our student representative report with Helen Brinkus. Hello, everyone.
Is that better?
Now, I gotta sing.
Okay. Thank you. Helen?
Hi, everyone. Full house today. In terms of district-wide updates, there's a couple of things that are going on. Tomorrow night will be the Fifth Annual Black History Month Career Night, where an awesome panel of speakers will teach about a variety of career paths. The district is preparing for our Monthly Community Building Day on Thursday, which I know a ton of people are excited for because they're always super fun. And tonight, actually, as we speak, is the Band Extravaganza Concert, which features a bunch of different performers from all of the schools, I believe, in the district. So, that's super cool and you should check it out once you're done here. At the high school, the Prism Concert was a whole lot of fun for both performers and audience members. I was in it in a couple ensembles. It was awesome. There were groups like Select Treble Choir and Jazz Combo that were performing and everybody is so talented. The PHS Art Show showcased the amazing work of some talented students at our school and we walked around and it was super cool. Many clubs are celebrating Valentine's Day also. I know French Club threw a Paris-themed meeting with like Shirley Temples. It was awesome. The Penfield Representatives at Science Olympiad did a fantastic job. They won tons of medals and everyone did very, very well. Best Buddies threw a game day last month, which was a huge hit for all of the members. And the West gym was totally packed for the boys' varsity basketball game. The tickets were completely sold out and it was really cool to see all of the people that were wearing black, like blackout. It was awesome. At Bay Trail, the Buffalo Qualifier, the Bay Trail Robotics Team went and the, the team Oncoming Storm six-nine-nine-six won the Inspire Award, which is given to the team that best embodies the mission of the First Tech Challenge Program. The enrichment department is excited to offer an optical illusions exploration where students can learn about how the brain can process images in ways that are sometimes surprising. Pinterest Club is making stress balls to help with emotional regulation. And students in the pop orchestra are having a great time playing a variety of styles of music. It's everything from film scores to video games and just stuff you'd hear on the radio. So, that's super cool. At Scribner, the PTA had a planet science club last week and students learned about microplastics, recycling, and the science of what we eat. And also, they met some animals from the Seneca Park Zoo. They had a, a staff member that was there. At Indian Landing, the cast and crew of Adventures in Mother Goose Land put on a great show at the end of January. And at Harris Hill, the Harris Hill Academy started earlier this month and students have the opportunity to take classes after school, such as Lego and Pets and Vets. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
Thank you, Helen.
As does sometimes, it happens to be what you report, there's redundancy in my report, so I apologize for that in advance. But I'm going to share with you now our superintendent's reports. We have this evening, our student and staff honors. I'm going to also provide some district updates. We'll have some updates come from Dr. Maloney, connected to our curriculum and instruction, human resources with Dr. Kenny, and then a final business and finance update with Dr. Triffel. And so, our student and staff honors, we have Rochester Institute of Technology Art Awards. So, congratulations to the following Penfield High School students who received awards for their artwork in the annual Start Here Art Show at RIT. We have Logan, who has the Dean's Award for Digital Photography. We have Kai for the School for American Crafts, Metals, and Jewelry Design Award. We have Tanya for the School of Design, Vignelli Award, the Digital Photography, and Sage for the Beaver Gallery Award for Watercolor. So, congratulations to those students. We have our Scholastic Arts Awards. So, congratulations to our Penfield High School students who earned the awards in the annual Scholastic Arts Competition. Megan won a Gold Key Award in the jewelry category. Look at that artwork, isn't that amazing? And Madeline won a Silver Key Award. So, congratulations to Megan and Madeline. And so, Helen beat me to this one. We've got the Robotics Award. Bay Trail's robotics team, six-nine-nine-six, known as Oncoming Storm, recently participated in the Buffalo Qualifier. And the team earned the prestigious Inspire Award, which is presented to teams that best embody the mission of the First Tech Challenge Program. Congratulations to the entire team. We have our All-County Music Festival. Congratulations to the students who have been selected to participate in the Monroe County School Music Association's All-County Festivals in March. We have forty-five students from our high school. We have thirty-three students from our middle school, our junior high, and we have sixteen students from our senior high school and three that are representing our jazz band. How about that for our County Music Festival? And then our New York State Public High School Athletic Association, we have our Scholar-Athlete Award. Congratulations to the Penfield High School teams that have been named for this Scholar-Athlete Teams for the winter season. To qualify for this honor, the teams average for seventy-five percent of the roster must be ninety percent or higher. This recognition includes the following teams: Boys and Girls Basketball, Girls Bowling, Competitive Cheering, Ice Hockey, Boys and Girls Nordic Skiing, Boys Swimming, Boys and Girls Trek, and Boys Wrestling. Congratulations to our Scholar-Athlete Award winners. And now, we have Penfield Education Foundation. It's the 5K and it's being held at nine AM on Sunday, April twenty-seventh, at Penfield High School. Registration is now open. This is a primary fundraiser for the foundation, which supports student scholarships and teacher grants. And I'll just add that a recent grant was just awarded to Indian Landing from our Penfield Education Foundation. So, please join. Okay, you can go ahead. All right. So, I'm going to share some updates now. I wanted to, to provide a way to support communication with the district. This was actually sent to families in September and it was also represented in our District, Penfield Central School District, two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar and handbook. And it's an opportunity for folks to see who in the district they're able to contact if they have a question, a concern, or a compliment. So, again, this was in an early September, actually, I think it might have been the end of the month, September. It was an earlier part of our school year. But in September, we provided this as a standalone in Parent Square and we also included it in the handbook. So, please, check this out. But one thing that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, because about the guide, you will notice, and I'll just toggle back just for a second, but you'll notice the category that if you have an area that you want to discuss further, learn more about, or just connect with the person that's responsible for that area, there are four steps that you can follow. So, again, please reference that. But what's most important in regards to how we want to foster positive communication and consistent communication with our families and our community members, and if you want us to address your questions and your concerns quickly and effectively, we've developed this communications protocol. And this is to promote open and direct interactions so that issues and concerns can be worked out with us in partnership with you. The communication protocols, protocol starts with the staff member closest to the situation. So, in most cases, it may be the building administrator, it may be a director, but once you find yourself transitioning from any one of those throughout those steps, you may find yourself, after you've exhausted all of those things, a call from me or members from our senior cabinet. So, like, it's referenced in this guide, there may be those additional personnel members that you need to help to resolve situations or questions or concerns, and we want to make sure that folks are accessing these channels. So, I wanted to take some time this evening to reiterate how we want to have opportunities to work with our families and members of our community, and we ask that you reference this, who can I call? Who do I call? So that you'll know the pathway of, of individuals, of personnel within our district to support you. Also, as an update, we know that we've had some recent discussion in our district, so I wanted to spend some time. So, what I'm going to do is I'm actually going to be reading directly from some policies that are a part of our Board of Education Policy Manual. And the first policy is Policy eighty-three-twenty. This policy is specific to textbooks, library materials, and other instructional materials. And I highlight library materials because that has been the point of question or concern. So, I wanted to make sure that we can emphasize library materials today and walk you through our process around what the policy suggests for library materials specifically. So, the district's So the district's instructional program is enriched and supported by the selection of quality print and non-print instructional materials. Selected instructional materials will align with the New York State learning standards, reflect different viewpoints, and meet the varied needs and interests of staff and students. So specifically to the policy around library materials, we have established in each one of our schools a library media center. And these centers meet the needs of our students and our staff by providing adequate, complimentary, instructional materials to support area, various areas of our curriculum. The board is responsible for delegating its authority to designate library materials to be used in the district to the school librarian-media specialists. When appropriate, the school librarian-media specialist will utilize shared services, such as our BOSIs, to improve programs and services, and build those collections, and utilize new technologies, and maximize funding. The board will make provision for funds to be budgeted for the purchase of library materials, and students may be required to pay for library materials that are lost, excessively damaged, or overdue. Objectives in the selection of instructional materials. So in order for our district to select quality print and non-print instructional materials to enrich and support the district's instructional program, the board endorses and supports the selection of instructional materials that align with the standards, implement, enrich, and support the district's curriculum and instructional objectives, meeting the interests, abilities, and learning styles of our students. It meets the varied, varied needs and interests of our staff and our students, presents various sides of controversial issues, so that students may develop critical thinking and reading skills resulting in the ability to make informed decisions, offer global perspectives and promote diversity by including materials by authors and illustrators of all cultures. Materials will not be excluded based on race, nationality, religion, gender, gender expression, sexual orientation, political views, or social views of the author. Provide staff and students with a wide range of up-to-date instructional materials of all levels of difficulty in a variety of physical and digital formats, including print and non-print, such as electronic and multimedia. And afford students the opportunity to explore a diverse range of literature to develop and strengthen a lifelong love of reading. So now, I'll address objection to instructional materials. So this is where the Policy 8330 addresses procedures to voice concerns and/or objections of instructional materials. The district community members who have questions or concerns about instructional materials are encouraged to bring these questions and concerns to instructional staff and/or the school librarian, library media specialist. District community members who wish to formally object to instructional materials must submit their objections in writing to the superintendent. So I'll pause there for a moment to share that that message, along with communication that came from Board President, emphasized the importance of contacting the superintendent to share an objection. And I have not yet received any communications regarding objections. So challenged instructional materials will remain in use and/or circulation until a final decision has been made. The board will be informed of any objection the superintendent receives. The superintendent will designate a review committee to investigate and evaluate the challenged instructional material. The committee will include, among others, a district librarian-media specialist and a building or district administrator. The committee will evaluate the challenged material according to the district's criteria for the evaluation and selection of instructional materials. The review committee will submit a written report of the results of their review to the superintendent within 60 days of receipt of the formal written objection. This timeframe may be extended if multiple objections have been submitted to the superintendent. Regulation, so the regulation helps us with acting out, following through. It's the how of the policy. So the policy suggests, the regulation for this, is that upon receipt of a form, and it's listed in our policy manual on the district website, number 8330-FORM, the superintendent will designate a review committee to investigate and evaluate the challenged instructional material. A district of building-level administrators will lead the review committee, which may include, again, a school librarian-media specialist from the district where the objection originated, a certified teacher of an appropriate curriculum content and grade level, the curriculum coordinator or an equivalent administrator, and, where and when appropriate, a parent and/or a student. The review committee may utilize appropriate certified staff from the Board of Cooperative Educational Services to fill positions if necessary. So this is a continuation of the regulation. Two, to review, the review committee members will all be given the challenged material to read. They will watch and/or listen to it in its entirety. Within 60 days of receipt of the Form 8330-F, the review committee will submit a report and any supporting evidence of its findings in writing to the superintendent via the administrator who led the review committee. The superintendent will provide the review committee's findings and decision in writing to the individual who submitted, submitted the objection. If the majority of the review committee recommends removal, the challenged material will only be removed from the specific district library media center or school building where the objection was filed, unless the review committee indicates otherwise in its report. Instructional materials for classroom use may remain in circulation in the district's library and media center if the report determines that it is appropriate. So this information is shared, and there's also an appeals process. So an appeals of decision by the review committee must be submitted in writing to the superintendent, who will then submit the appeal to the board for action. The board members will be given the challenged material to read, watch, and/or listen to in its entirety. The board will evaluate the challenged material according to the district's criteria for the evaluation and selection of instructional materials, and the board may not remove books from a library and media center solely to restrict access to certain social, political, and moral ideas of which the board disapproves. After reviewing the challenged material, the board will direct the superintendent on the action to be taken with the challenged material. So Dr. Maloney, I know that your office oversees our library and media specialists and curriculum and instruction. Do you have anything else that you'd like to add to what I've shared relative to our policies?
Absolutely, Dr. Potter. I really appreciate you going through step by step the process for challenging a book or, and/or the appeals process. One of the pieces that I wanted to mention is, as you mentioned, my office oversees the library department, and so I would facilitate a committee should a book be challenged. And to ensure that we have a fair process to selecting members of the committee, depending on the number of stakeholders interested, we can do a recorded lottery like we do for UPK. A recorded lottery is when we survey a stakeholder group. In this case, it would be parents, teachers, or students. And those who are interested would share their name, and then we'd get a big old bingo roller like you see on the lottery at 7:30, I think, every night, and we shake it up, and then we pull the names. And all while recording, so that if people have a question, they're welcome to watch the recording. And another option, and this actually has been done recently with some of our committees within the district, that we've been looking for stakeholder input. Another option is, depending on the number of responses we get, again, we would survey a stakeholder group for those interested, and then have all who respond actually serve on the committee. I believe that's what we're doing with the policies that we're writing relative to culturally responsive curriculum and...
Yeah, but does it take this long for books to get in the system?
Excuse me, we do not communicate with the community at this park. I will explain that in a little bit. No, Dr. Maloney, please continue. We do not communicate. We don't go back and forth.
Since the last board meeting, I have spent a lot of time learning what other districts do when concerns about books have been brought up, and I've met with colleagues from other districts. And I think what's important for the board to know is that, what I've learned is, every district has, has a different approach and a different policy relative to this. So, you know, Dr. Potter did a great job walking through our policy, and again, depending on the district, the policies are different. I also wanted to add, I think there's been a lot of chatter around how are books selected? And in working with the librarians, books are selected in so, through so many different ways. I, one of the, one of the students were...
Excuse me, be quiet so that she is able to continue. Thank you.
For example, librarians have professional library journals that are specifically written for librarians relative to schools. And these journals literally give reviews of books that are being published and recommendations in terms of what curriculum they align to. The librarians also look for recommendations from students, families, teachers. There's lots of ways that books are selected for the library. It's not just simply one, one way.
I think that, I, my question, right, would be that, excuse me, if you cannot be quiet during this, we're going to ask for you to be removed. Thank you. I think it's important to know that when Dr. Potter said that no one has objected, we have the policy in place, right? The procedures in place to object. Excuse me, that's not, that is not how you object. So if you cannot, again, follow by what we have asked you to do, we will ask for you all to, we will ask those people who cannot do that to be removed. We are, we are here at our board meeting, right, conducting our business. You guys, and I will explain, you don't pay us because we don't get paid. Yes, I will, we are going to go into a recess. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. We are in recess.